Good morning, and Ms. Ramirez, could you please confirm the quorum?
Yes, sir. We have yourself, trustee Steen, the mayor, the vice chair. We have four members present. That's a quorum.
Thank you. At this time, item number two, we have the safety message invocation pledge of allegiance. Ms. Anna Marie Rangel.
Thank you. I will review the evacuation procedures so that we are prepared to be safe in the event of an emergency. If you hear the fire alarm, follow the instructions announced through the P A system. If asked to evacuate, use a glass door to exit outside and verbally alert others. We'll move to the main parking lot in front of the building or the A T and T parking lot at the McCullough Brooklyn Bridges. Our security team will be watching and will notify the appropriate emergency services. And lastly, we'll have our employees nearby who are trained to administer first aid if needed. Safety is a top priority, and while we hope this information is never needed, we want to ensure we are prepared. Will you please stand for, stand with me for an invocation? We thank you for the many blessings you have freely given to each of us. We ask for your presence to guide this meeting of the CPS Energy Board of Trustees, provide them with the knowledge, compassion, and wise counsel needed as they discuss the business matters on the agenda today. Help us all to remember that we are stewards acting on behalf of our customers and provide us with the grace to serve all people. We ask this in your name. Amen. Now, please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Lillian Carpenter, would you please allow for public comments?
Yes, sir. Public comment provides an opportunity for members of the public to share thoughts on posted agenda items for this meeting. We will invite pre-registered speakers to speak. They may only address the board on CPS Energy-related business listed on the posted agenda. Speakers should state their first and last name, the organization or group they represent, and the agenda item they will speak about. For this meeting, we have one in-person speaker. Each speaker will have two minutes to speak. Thomas, will you please cue the timer? Our first speaker is Ms. Henrietta LaGrange.
Thank you, and good morning. My name is Henrietta LaGrange, part of the Mulberry Street Girl Gang and Growing Up Brown. So, thank you for the opportunity to be here. And as difficult as it is for all of us, we're happy that the rate hike passed. I would like if the mayor would allow me or help me get an appointment with the three descending council people because I would love to speak to them, what is their perspective, and why they didn't vote for it, because it's huge for us. Because I represent a group that is not rich, but they're willing to make the sacrifice. And most of all, I want to thank Mr. Garza because Rudy, you don't know the impact that you have made in this town. People, that's the only name they know now, is Rudy Garza. And Rudy, I'm proud to be here today, letting you know that these are things that you don't hear. I'm out there. And let me tell you, I am out there. And if people call me, they call me up till 2:00 in the morning when there is a concern. I call it a concern, not a problem, because the problem will be solved by Mr. Garza. And here I am, here's Richard Medina and Richard Lujan. And I know the tremendous effect that they have had on CPS Energy. And I'm proud to say that if I call them and give them a concern, they will address it, as Richard is, Mr. Medina, this morning. And I'm proud to say that I'm in great company. Janie Gonzalez, Francine Romero, I love to pronounce your names in Spanish correctly, not Gonzalez or Romero. Thank you. But people, let me tell you, CPS Energy has grown. And I'm proud to say that with this new leadership, everything will get done. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we will move to item number four, approval of minutes of the Risk Management Committee held on, meeting held on 8/28/2023, and the minutes of the Risk Management Committee meeting held on 9/25. Do we have a motion?
I move approval for both, if I can.
Yes. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. All in favor. Okay. We've moved on to item number five, the Enterprise Risk Management Update. Ms. Anna Marie Rangel.
Thank you. Today, I'll be giving an Enterprise Risk Management Update. The agenda highlights key points of our discussion, which are initiatives, the Enterprise Risk Register update, and driving the Enterprise Risk Management maturity. At our last Risk Management Committee meeting in September, I discussed that in an effort to strategically align with and provide support to the organization, that E R M S would pursue a variety of methods to engage with the organization. In the next couple of slides, I will talk about what we have been working on and how we've accomplished, what we've accomplished since the last Risk Management Committee meeting. E R M S was presented with an opportunity to discuss risk and controls during a CPS Energy-sponsored lunch and learn. We took the opportunity to provide a fresh perspective in explaining risk and control fundamentals to the lunch and learn attendees. Members of the E R M S team explained how the organization penalized risks, controls, and insurance programs to identify and mitigate risks. Additionally, we had members of the audience explain to their peers their experience engaging with E R M S, and how we provided support, expertise, and the tools to assess risks and identify these types of discussions so that they can better make, I'm sorry, so they can better make decisions. The conversation gave the attendees a better understanding of risk and controls and how to apply the methods, concepts, and tools daily in their organizations. But much more importantly, the attendees walked away understanding that risk and controls are everyone's responsibility. So, E R M S received really good feedback from this particular session. And we wanted to extend our reach within the organization, so we decided to partner with People and Culture. And so, People and Culture has two opportunities for us to take advantage of. One is the Management Development Academy, which is an M D A, and that is for first-time managers or new managers to CPS Energy. And the other is the Re-Energize Leadership Training, and that's for employees and leaders who have been at CPS Energy for over five years. And so, both of these training programs will have a component in there on risk and controls. Overall, E R M S will continue with the traditional training of C B Ts, but will also continue to drive for new training, as I have mentioned. And so, next, I discussed that E R M S strives to create strategic synergy within the organization, and integration in the planning process, and even within the organization is imperative. I believe the importance of being integrated and collaborative is fundamental in getting support from the organization and driving risk and controls within the organization. To ensure that E R M S actively engages with the organization, we must actively participate in conversations. Therefore, in addition to intentional meetings and touchpoints with risk and mitigation owners and stakeholders, we are also members of a variety of cross-functional committees and teams. So, for example, risk management is on the E R P Risk Subcommittee to ensure that we are providing awareness on, and the appropriate level of awareness of E R P risks. Energy Market Hedging and Credit supports a Hedging Operations Committee to ensure we're aligned with hedging policy. And Internal Control leads and facilitates the Procure-to-Pay Process Working Group to gain alignment on potential process improvements and internal control improvements as it relates to supply chain, accounts payable processes, and field service representative responsibilities. So, as you can see, these committees touch a myriad of different organizational objectives, which allows us the opportunities to build relationships and gain more operational knowledge. This is important for E R M S if we want to be effective. With that, E R M S must also ensure we are aware of leading industry practices and share the information with the organization through our program, tools, and training. To stay current in our risk management training, E R M S leadership attended the Risk and Insurance Management Society, or R I M S, conference. The conference topics highlighted risk and strategy, artificial intelligence, or A I, and geopolitical risks. Interestingly, though, the A I topics didn't center around cybersecurity. It centered around effectively implementing A I to support process improvements in business processes, analytics, and customer experience. And so, we'll take that information back to the organization as we have these conversations. E R M S also connected with other risk professionals and learned that our peers are discussing similar risks that we are, and they are also trying to evolve their programs to be more integrated and collaborative. So, overall, the conference provided assurance that our risk and controls program is moving in the right direction, and that our program opportunities and challenges are common and experienced by a variety of different organizations. Additionally, since our last Risk Management Committee meeting, we received the third-quarter Gartner Emerging Risk Report. Evolving socio-political expectations and data regulatory risks were new to the list. And so, we'll continue to monitor these risks and facilitate discussions as needed. The organization continues to enhance, I do want to mention this, the organization does continue to enhance data governance and data integrity in preparation for the new E R P. E R M S, as I mentioned before, participates in the Data Governance Committee. And so, this brings us to our annual risk refresh. Now, the training that we conducted throughout the year, the information we received from the R I M S conference, connecting with other risk professionals, the emerging risk insight that we receive, and the various discussions we have throughout the year in operations and about risks, it really helped us to be more prepared for the annual risk refresh and the conversations we have at the organization. And I just want to mention that we've had these discussions throughout the year on risk and mitigations with the organization, and throughout the year, we have been making updates to the risk register. So, we did not think that during the annual risk refresh, we would have a robust amount of changes. And true to form, the changes were modest. And so, overall, high-end SWAN risks were down by 7%, and the total number of risks were down by 14% compared to last year. The reduction in risk is mostly due to the consolidation of risk, which helps us with transparency and avoids redundancy. And there was also reassessment of risks for the implementation of ongoing mitigation plans that we have. The annual risk refresh provides assurance that the organization is having focused risk discussions. The updated risk register has been provided to you for And so, this leads us to what's next. What, how are we going to continue to mature the risk program? And so, I want to talk today about two different topics. One is a dynamic risk management model, and the other one is strategy. So, as we have mentioned and demonstrated, we will continue to support risks and mitigations by actively engaging with the organization. Our overall goal is to pursue a focused and measured approach in the movement from a traditional risk management model to a dynamic risk management model. And that will allow us the ability to manage risks in a way that enables the organization to identify risks timely, create holistic mitigation plans, and helps us adapt to change quickly. We are striving to ensure that risk management transitions to be a more agile, collaborative, and innovative and integrated approach. We know that our progress will be incremental, and we know that it will be a journey. Right now, we would like to leverage an audit review that we're going to participate in January. So, Audit Services is partnering with Deloitte to perform a risk advisory review that will kick off again in January. We will gain insight into the current and future state and obstacles and gaps we might have. And we're hoping to be able to use this information so that we can make more progress on our journey toward being a dynamic risk management model. And so, that leaves strategy. As mentioned at the last Risk Management Committee presentation and further discussed during this presentation, we continue to strive to align strategy and risks. Not only does a day mark operational review efficiency report state that risks and strategies should align, but at the R I M S conference, our peers are also doing the same thing. This is a leading industry practice that we want to pursue actively. So, as we solidify the Vision 2027 strategic initiatives, deliverables, and milestones, we will partner with the organization on more focused risk discussions to help identify the risks associated with strategic initiatives, to be able to determine if these risks raise to the enterprise level. And we'll do that by continuing our involvement in the business plan to, we're going to do strategic risk dives, and then we're going to try to leverage that audit advisory assessment to help us. And so, lastly, to wrap up, we have made incremental progress in ensuring the risk program. It's moving in the right direction, and our thoughts are aligned with the leading practices. As the utility industry changes, we will continue to encounter a complex and dynamic risk landscape. The Enterprise Risk Management MOP program will need to continue to evolve and mature to support the growing business needs and associated risks. And to that point today, you will hear more about the growing complexities related to risks, risks such as cyber and A I, and generation planning as it pertains to customer growth and gas strategy. And so, I'll stop right there and ask if there are any questions.
Do we have any questions, comments?
I have questions. By the way, that was an excellent presentation.
Thank you.
If we could go back to, I think, slide, where you had all the three groups, you had data governance, you broke them down by three groups. I have a couple of questions. That one right here. So, we have data governance, and then we have the Enterprise Resource Planning Risk Committee. Where are we going to focus the A I, the A I policy that we don't have yet?
So, my thought right now is probably the data governance.
On the data governance? Okay, that was one question, because I know that's something that, I know it's work in progress from the brief conversations we've had, so.
I do think there's going to be overlapping conversations.
That was going to be my next thing. Is there the thought of, I almost feel like the way technology is evolving and the way the framework is, it's almost like it's one thing and not two separate things, and it's a function within those things.
You're right.
Data governance and then enterprise should be an overlap. Oh, it's almost like it should be digital business transformation, and then underneath it, you should have data governance, and then E R P. So, just something to think about. And then, the policy that I'm sure we'll start seeing soon as a board, I think that's something that we need to maybe have, like a lunch and learn situation as far as proposing some kind of policy. The other question I have, reference to slide seven and eight, but I think you already answered it. My question was, you all gave yourselves ranking. My thought, my next question was going to be, who was the third party that would assess and validate that self-assessment? And it's going to be Deloitte, correct?
Deloitte will be doing an assessment of it.
Yeah, because that was going to be my follow-up question. It's great to assess yourself, but what's that third-party perspective is always needed. And then, the other question I had is on, if you can go to slide, I think it's eight. So, I do like the idea that you're adopting this agile, dynamic risk management model. I think, again, in today's environment, especially more so with data analytics and the way technology is really pushing how we assess, and just the speed of the transformation that's happening right now, that the model should be more dynamic in nature. I don't think business models today, you can plan five, you can plan 10 years, but today's environment, you need to pivot a little bit faster where you can. So, I think this is a really good risk, risk model to, if you're not implementing, I would highly encourage that. And so, can we go to the top risk? There was a slide with the risk, geopolitical, I think, and that one. So, when I look at, it almost seems like some of these already are going to go into, like, 2024. These are the top, these are the top emerging risks. Now, what is the forecast for 2024? Do we see a difference?
I don't think that we'll see very much of a difference. And this is, this survey is a national survey, and it encompasses a variety of different organizations. And so, just from the trending that I've seen, I'm not sure that we'll see a whole lot of difference.
So, we're seeing, and I know we've done a significant amount of investment in our cloud transformation. So, I noticed that, is that what you mean by the concentration risk? Or is that, does it mean something else?
The cloud concentration risk centers around having redundancy.
Same.
Yeah. So, you're not in a centralized location. And so, I know CPS Energy has mitigated that risk.
Okay. And then, can you tell me a little bit more about how we're preparing for the mass A I availability?
That we're in discussion with right now.
Okay.
I think with the E R P transformation and the data governance conversations, we'll hear more about that.
Okay. Those are all my questions. Thank you.
Mr. Steen.
Thank you, Dr. Mackey. So, Ms. Ron Hill, you have one of the most challenging jobs in this organization. And so, you're the director of the E R M S. What is that?
Enterprise Risk Management Solutions.
Right. And in some organizations, they have a chief risk officer, but that's basically what you do. You're the chief risk officer.
I am the director of risk management, E R M S.
All right. And I appreciate your presentation. But I'd like to focus on our most worrisome risk. You know, the thing they say, we're the ones that keep you up at night. And I'd like to ask you, do you keep any kind of a list of our top 10 risks?
In our risk report that was provided to you today, there is a top 10 risk.
There is? All right.
Hmm.
All right. I didn't get, how is it provided today? Where is that?
I put the books on your, on your desk. Oh, sorry. They haven't been passed out.
And just for this group, speak their mark of privilege.
Well, this, actually, I've got the one with your name on it, so.
That's all right.
All right. Well, I haven't obviously had time to look at this, but I think that's very useful. So, you're identifying the top 10 risk. What criteria are you using to do that?
Our probability and impact scores.
That's what I would think, yeah.
Right. It's on page 14 of the book.
And again, just as a reminder to the group, the contents of this are privileged and confidential, so please, please don't shout out the top 10.
And accompanying the top 10 risks, do you have the mitigation that's tied into that?
No, I'm sorry, did not provide the mitigations today.
All right. Well, that's something that I'd like to see, which is, and of course, it would be confidential. And if we talked about it, you know, I'm, of course, a big proponent of transparency, but there are things we probably shouldn't be talking about, like cybersecurity and other things.
I can provide you the mitigations that are in place already, because maybe we've had these on the risk register before. And then, for the new risks that we have on the list, we can get the mitigations to you.
All right. Well, I haven't had time to review this, but that's what I was going to ask you about, is our top 10 risks. So, thank you for doing that, and appreciate it.
And, sir, that is certainly something that we could take into executive session.
That's what I was going to say. What committees, make sure that they go through the appropriate committees for further discussion, as well as?
I think this committee is appropriate, but I think we could go.
Thank you, Ms. Ramirez. No question. Mayor? You're good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great presentation. Okay. If we'll move to item number six, large customer update. Mr. Benjamin Jordan.
Good morning. My name is Benjamin Jordan, the Director of Business and Economic Development. Today, I'm going to talk to you about a large customer segment that we are paying attention to today. I did present a version of this at the Operations Oversight Committee last week, and so, just wanted to mention that. So, today, we're going to talk about some industry information for some of our block load energy requested customers. We're going to talk about how we're focused strategically on this customer, how they're impacting all of our plans, and we're right in the middle of that from an organizational perspective to make sure we're paying attention to this customer. Anna Marie touched on the risk and everything we're paying attention to, sort of as a business. And so, other businesses are doing the same thing we are, in preparing for the influx of artificial intelligence and what that does to the energy request that we're seeing. And then, what we've done organizationally to align, to really focus and serve our customers. And then, I'm going to give you a view on the amount of energy that's been requested, if our five and 10-year So, just to touch a little bit, I'm a little bit focused more on, not just data centers, but today, it's really a little bit focused on data centers. But we do, we are focused on large customers, manufacturing, and things of that nature in general. That's why we have on the Business and Economic Development side as well. So, we've got, we're ingesting these large power request customers. So, the customers that we've seen a little bit of shift in the behavior in large power requests for data centers, I know you guys are probably familiar with these requests that are out there in the industry. And so, what we've seen is that the businesses continue to migrate to the cloud. And so, that is creating a sort of a base demand for energy request. And then, we're preparing for the artificial intelligence is what we're hearing from the customers as they interact with these large customer requests. Typically, requests were in the 20 to 40 megawatt range. Now, they're in the hundreds of megawatts, which impacts generation plans and things that we really need to start paying attention to. And they're also asking us for low cost, we are at low cost, so they're very interested in our service territory. And so, we're focused on that as well. They're asking us for zero carbon. They have lofty zero-carbon goals. And so, they're really challenging us to think about tariffs and things of that nature, to kind of figure out how we provide that sort of an option for these customers. So, I mentioned, you know, this is all about strategically focusing on this type of customer. The amount of energy they're requesting is significant. And so, leadership team got together during the Strategic Planning and Research Knowledge Summit, and really focused on it. This large customer segment was a particular line item that we focused on in the general discussion. And what we've learned is that it impacts the power generation plan, how we ingest this type of customer, and really focused on the customer experience, because it is a different level of analysis on the engineering side that's required to serve this kind of customer, because it impacts, it's impacting the transmission system at this point. And again, we've got some creative solutions that we're going to have to come up with, with their zero-carbon goals. And so, we've teed up some rate tariff analysis that's in our future that you're also aware of. So, some specifics on, you know, why I'm here today, and why, you know, risk is mentioning, and the strategy behind these kinds of customers. Our existing data center customer base is around 324 megawatts. That's around, like, it's about 65,000 residential homes is the equivalent there. I know you guys, you always hear that a megawatt is around 200 residential homes at peak. So, just to give you a flavor of what we're talking about here, the magnitude of energy that we're talking about. And so, you can see, and I've got a five-year view in the year 2028, and then a 10-year view in 2033. And so, this is just a flavor of really the segments of how we ingest these customers. And so, we've got executed agreements for seven, which is a tune of 500 megawatts in the next five years. We've got customers that have acquired land that will move into the agreement phase of about 600 megawatts. And then, of course, we've got our speculative customers that are looking for good pieces of land that they can get large amounts of block energy really quickly. And so, just to kind of put it in perspective, we've got about 2.7 gigawatts of energy requested over the next five years. Not necessarily going to be ramped up in five years, but we've got to pay attention to this customer. We've received the actual request. In 10 years, it's 3.3 gigawatts. That is very significant. And so, we have aligned, it is in our strategy plans, and we're paying attention to this request. Another, you know, I mentioned the data centers and connecting to our transmission system. They've got a concentrated area of our service territory that they, that they're interested in, and it has to do with a lot of, a lot of different factors. There's been, this is an established area of our service territory that has good communications, traditionally had a lot of transmission availability. So, they were able to get power a lot quicker. And so, the way that the data center community looks at how they diversify their portfolios, they also look for physical different locations. And so, you can kind of see a little triangle created over there in the western service part, western portion of our service territory. And so, we are letting the community know that if they continue to ask us for large amounts of power in the same area, that we need to start looking in other parts of our service territory to serve large block loads, because it is just going to take us a lot longer to serve them in that area. And quite frankly, we might be at our limit in that area. We can always solve for it from an engineering perspective. It's just going to take a lot longer. And they're racing to get to large amounts of energy quickly. And so, we're kind of like, we have other portions of our territory as well, so. And so, serving our customer of this type, it requires, you know, we're good at, you know, large commercials, you know, small commercial residential processing customers. In this level of energy they're requesting to the tune of four, five, up to 800 megawatts, it requires a transmission level assessment, requires communications with our regulators at the Public Utility Commission, with ERCOT. And then, also, our internal focus is really what this is, this is about here, and what we're doing about it. And we're, that, this customer is going to put a tremendous amount of strain on the generation plan and the portfolios and in all portions of our business, from legal to engineering, transmission planning, construction, building substations. planning, uh, construction, building substations. This, this type of customer is going to require a substation. Like, we're not going to serve them with the pad and mount transformer. This is the large infrastructure that we're going to be building for these customers. And so we, uh, we created a, a, a business unit. My title is different from before. It was, basically, I was focused on a larger customer base that was, you know, we were on the customer side under Deanna and Karma, uh, through Rudy's direction. Now that we brought Elena on board, from a strategy perspective, we've realigned that group from just large customer ingesting to really include the, the economic, the economic development piece of it. So it's a nice merge to that business, so we can help as they're looking for pieces of land, guide them to the portions of the territory that are probably a little bit faster, maybe more available. We can come up with some different solutions for this kind of customer. But this is really the slide that says we've, we're paying attention, we're agile in how we're organizationally aligned, and we're focused on the amount of pressure that this customer is going to put on our plans.
Do we have any questions or comments? Yes.
Can I make a comment real quick, Dr. Romero, before you, you asked your question? You know, all utilities, um, are, are faced with this challenge. You know, every major metropolitan area that has data needs, um, is going through this transformation where we're having to think about these really large customers differently. In most cases, Greater SATX will be involved, you know, in, uh, in these companies coming to town. And so that's why organizationally it made sense to realign Ben and, uh, his effort under Elena because of the broad cross-organizational, you know, uh, effort it takes, um, to, to get these folks situated. So, uh, again, you know, the, the good thing is that, um, you know, I attend LP, the Large Public Power Council CEO, uh, meetings that are held quarterly where we talk about these things. So, you know, CEOs are talking about how to implement best practices to ensure we're responsive. I'll say this, Texas is in a lot better position than other areas of the country, where it may take 15 years to get a transmission line built. You know, three years is still a long time here in Texas, but it's better. Um, but one of the biggest challenges when we have to build transmission is the regulatory timeline it takes to get those, those projects built versus the 15 to 18 months that most of these type of companies want us to be able to, to provide service in. So, uh, not, you know, this particular area has risk because of just the, the complex nature of, uh, what we need to do to serve these customers, which is why it's on the agenda today. So I just wanted to point that out.
Dr. Romero?
Um, thank you. We spent a lot of time on this at Operations Oversight, mostly because I asked you so many questions. Um, so thank you. Um, I, I did just want to mention that I, I had brought up that day that I really think this is a chance for us to interact with the city, uh, with Planning Department and Development Services, because this is something that could potentially be addressed through zoning. I know it's, it's, it's tricky because it doesn't, you, you can't start discriminating against certain uses, um, that, that don't use the land any differently. But I still think it would definitely be worth a conversation, and that's a good way where we can, um, start pushing businesses to be more distributed. Um, so I didn't mean to say like, oh, it's easy, just talk to Development Services. Um, but I think there's, there's some, we could gain something with that. Um, so just a couple of questions. Um, as I understand it, um, so these companies need to donate the land for the substation or, or sell it to CPS for a really low price, correct?
Correct. We typically work with our customers to, to donate land as we're billing out a substation for the customers. Yes, ma'am.
And then what are the costs for the, for the company when, when it requires an actual substation?
So that, it, it kind of depends, but a typical substation cost, um, by itself, I believe, is in the five to eight million dollar range, roughly. Uh, costs are going up, so my, apologize, my number might be a little dated, but we're, we're talking millions of dollars.
And how is that cost shared with the company?
So the, this type of customer, though, this type of customer will pay for their, any redundant pieces. These kinds of customers are very risk averse, so they're asking us for redundant pieces of equipment, and they pay for that piece.
I'm not sure what that means. So if you have to put in an eight million dollar substation, are they paying for it, or CPS Energy is paying for it?
Half and half.
Okay.
Whatever, whatever, it's, it's shared, so they have a standard service. So their standard service is, is just like any other customer. They pay for the redundant piece of that.
Okay. I want to, well, I want to make sure I understand it. I wanted to make sure the public understands it, because there were a lot of questions at council about incentives for developers. Uh, so, okay, thank you for that.
We don't, we don't have incentives.
Okay. But just the last one, then. We had, we talked just a little bit last week about, and you talked now about how the generation plan will probably need to be substantially changed, uh, because of these companies coming in. So can we talk a little bit about what the, what the plan is for how, how we start making those changes?
So the, the first plan is to, is to pay attention to these customers, and we're going to watch the, the load ramp. But we are planning a lot, a lot further out than we have before. I know we talked about Vision 2027, but we're, with this plan, we're, we're looking, I mean, we're, we're are looking past 2027. But it is really, that's what we're doing, is looking a lot further, because the load ramp, that's just a 10-year view on when they're requesting the electrons. But they will have a load ramp and a natural load ramp. And to Rudy's point, we will have some runway that we need to deal with to kind of get all the transmission infrastructure built, get the substation built. These are multi-year projects that we're talking about building for the customer. So we've got a short window that we're going to inject this particular customer into all the plans to make sure that we can identify any anomalies or anything that we need to accelerate and really pay attention to the request.
Okay, sorry, one last question. I know you talked about, uh, the voluntary tariffs, uh, that, that these companies are actually interested in paying, um, so that they would, they would have the, the lower carbon footprint. And we talked about how that's not just greenwashing, that they would be paying for something real, which would be development of renewables. So I just wanted to make sure that the plan going forward is that the percentage of renewables in the generation plan won't decline as, as a result of these businesses coming in.
Yeah. One of the things that, that I'll add on that point, Dr. Romero, is a lot of these customers have their own sustainability goals that we're working with them on, uh, to source their own renewables. So, um, these are multi, you know, major multinational companies, um, that, you know, we're having to create specific, um, you know, kind of rate structures for, so that, you know, they'll, I think they'll actually, you know, have the, the, the net effect of increasing our investment in renewables, not, not, not bringing it down.
And, and actually, I think they're actually more of a threat than it is an opportunity for us if we're not careful. I mean, Apple has its own solar farm. So I really think that we need to really think about, when we talk about a creative solution, I mean, what, I think we need to really start thinking about, what does that business model look like? Instead of waiting for them to tell us how to build something, I really think that we needed to start developing plug-in PlayStations, that we, we pre-invest and built in the areas, and then it's like infrastructure as a service. I think that we need to start thinking about how CPS becomes its own, how it plays, because I think our biggest threat's going to be that they already have the capabilities. They don't really need us. It, it's, it's just going to take policy and deregulation at Texas, and then we have competitors. They, they have their own infrastructures already. It's right now that the policies or the way we're set up doesn't allow them to go that far. But if you look, if you really look at cloud, the way it's set up, it's, it's, it's set up like a utility. I pay, I mean, I, I am an Amazon customer, so I know, I mean, you're paying for usage. And so, um, I think when we think about creative solutions, I think we need to kind of figure out what, as an organization, if we built these centers already with some basic infrastructure, and it's our way, not their way. So I think our business model is going to change fairly quickly, and we need to kind of figure out, some of the few that from Dr. Romero was excellent, but, but it's a threat to, to our business. So we need to start thinking about that threat, and what does that threat look like, and how do we plan for it? I think that, again, we have an opportunity, but we need to be more creative in how we're designing our business. I think our business model is changing, has changed already. Let me be clear, it has changed already. How do we prepare for that threat? And then how do we design the infrastructure, uh, economic development infrastructure for plug and play? Right? And the digital transformation will have a lot to do with that. So the question is, by the time we implement that, are we already behind? Or what do we phase out first so that we're not behind? It's really the thought there.
Madam Chair, I would, uh, I would comment this way. I think it's, certainly it's a threat. I, I don't disagree with that. But I think that threat only really materializes if we show a lack of willingness to cooperate with, with what it is that they're needing, you know, from us. So, um, that's why our entire kind of business model and our, our strategy, uh, has to change over the long term, you know, to, to allow customers, meet customers where they are, to create processes and rate structures that enable them to do the, the, the work that they want to do and the way they want to do it. Otherwise, I think they will, you know, uh, push harder, you know, for deregulate, deregulation in San Antonio, which is why we've got to get ahead of this.
And, and I guess the only other thing that we haven't discussed, and this is where Dr. Romero, I think this is important too, the mix of what we have is important, and, and also looking into newer technologies to, to be able to facilitate, uh, faster processing of this data, right? So the need to explore, um, thermal, geothermal, you know, the, the other two technologies, the, that's one of them, for example. How do we start using these newer technologies to meet environmental goals, but at the same time being able to meet, uh, facilitating this type of usage? And so the newer technologies, I know that we're already kind of looking into, is going to be key to this. So I think that our plan, as we talked about 2027, is like, what are the two or three technologies potentially in the next five years that'll be available, supported by AI or quantum processors, are going to be able to accelerate our ability to optimize the service that we provide, right? Because ultimately, that's really what it is, is have them use less, not more, through technologies, right? But still give them the computing power that they need. That's going to be the, the key to this.
Mayor?
Thank you, Chair. And just a couple things to add, since it did come up. Um, from an economic development standpoint, City Council restructured our economic development incentives. So I can't remember the last time, uh, we've incentivized a data center, uh, but suffice it to say, those kinds of economic development activities are not incentivized with tax dollars any longer. Um, but again, it's been at least a decade, I think, since we've had one of those major operators come in. Um, and so the, the, what I wanted to ask is, that number of 324 megawatts of large-scale customers is a current number today?
Yes.
So you're talking about, over the next seven to 10 years, a tenfold increase in that number?
Yes, sir.
That's huge. And that has enormous implications, not just for San Antonio, but for Texas. And so, um, first thing is, uh, understanding that these kinds of customers come in because they're serving a need. You know, data centers might not be the sexiest economic development activity, but they're serving a huge need, uh, worldwide. Uh, so it's, it's happening for a reason. Uh, the second thing is, because of the implications that go far beyond our ability to serve our customers and into the larger Texas conversation, are we involving, I guess you would, in those conferences that you're talking about with other operators? ERCOT is at the table, because this is a problem for them, not just for us.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I don't know, Mayor, that I characterize it as a problem. I mean, when they show up, you got to serve them, right? And everybody's faced with, you know, it's no different than electric vehicles. Electric vehicles add capacity, you know, that wasn't there before in, in, in big tranches. That's, that's the, the, the challenge is, these are big loads that show up, yeah.
Before I'm, I'm quoting on that, it's not a problem. It is a challenge, no doubt. But it could be an opportunity, because 3.2, 3.4 gigawatts of electricity coming on large-scale customer baseload capacity, that's a great opportunity for us to move the needle on, you know, our policy priorities, not just at the local level, but again, at the state level. So, you know, we don't incentivize these kinds of activities, but maybe we should take a look at how we engage with folks and what requirements in exchange for opportunities to, to be located on market. Um, you know, are they, they're bringing their own redundancies? Are they, you know, investing in, uh, most of them have those SDGs, so they're already investing in solar farms and that sort of thing. But, you know, what kind of redundancies in terms of infrastructure are they bringing to the market, since they're going to be stressing the market as a result of their oper, uh, operation? So that, that, that is a conversation I'd love to see engaged between the, the utilities and, and the cities.
Mayor, let me, let me add. Um, one thing that I don't think we spent as much time talking about today is, um, the, for the data centers that are already here, they are, they all, um, again, they run 24/7, 365. So they have, they, they all have redundancy, you know, to ensure that if, you know, they lose one feed of our system, they have another. They also have backup generation. So in times where the mar, market gets tight in the summer and in the winter, um, they do have the capability to go off system for a couple, two, three hours to help, um, you know, with the conservation efforts to ensure our residents aren't impacted. So I, I just want to leave with the, I think they're, they're great corporate citizens, you know, from their mindfulness of their impact on our system. And when we need their help, they always show up to help. And, and that's a good thing.
Yeah. One last thing, because I don't want my tone to sound like this is something we're, we're, we're scared of. It is, again, an opportunity, a challenge, but an opportunity. I, I do want to, and I've said this during the last several weeks of our rate conversation, those large corporate customers present an enormous opportunity for us to avoid the missteps of the larger Texas grid when it comes to not being able to serve the demand, meeting the capacity. We have folks in town here that are part of our corporate citizen base that are willing to use their backup infrastructure in order to keep the lights on in residences around the community. That's an enormous strength, potentially as a, kind of a large-scale customer backup source. Um, they've demonstrated an ability to be great citizens in the community, given our, our challenges. And maybe that's something, that's a conversation that we could be having as a, as a policy, uh, as, as we see some of this growth. Thank you very much.
The only thing I would add, also, just keep in mind that we, we forget that the consumers, us, small businesses are also have their infrastructure at these organizations. So as we're thinking about, it's not just about supporting their infrastructure, keep in mind that we're all connect, we're all in the same ecosystem. As a small business, I have my clients and their data centers, and we're all in some form or fashion connected. It's the Internet of Things, right? If it's not our, if it's not our, you know, we're backing up to the cloud for our phones or, you know, our hardware or software. So just keep that in mind, that we are also the consumer. We're the consumer of that data center, right? We're the customer. So it's, it goes above and beyond just thinking about how we support them. When you're supporting them, you're also supporting those of us who are tied to that as well. So it has a, there's a lot of relation, it's complex, this relationship is complex as we make these decisions, is my point.
You know, Mr. Gauz, I'm looking at this existing customer, 324 megawatts, and then I'm looking at year 2028, talking about 200, uh, 2,787, and 2033, 3,364. I don't know what we're going to do, see how we're going to get there. That's going, that's, this is more than a challenge.
Well, remember.
We talked last month, last board meeting about new generation that we're looking at, things of that sort. Uh, that's something that we're just really going to have to get on top of, because San Antonio is, is growing.
Yeah. Well, remember, with data, with the, these type of customers and everything else that we have going on, we're growing about 150 megawatts a year. So, you know, as we implement our generation strategy, you know, we got to keep an eye, not just on the growth, you know, but also the replacement of old infrastructure. So that's why it's important to constantly, every year, we got to move the needle in some regard. Uh, and, and I feel really, um, strongly that we've got a plan that will keep us ahead of it. But that's why the conversation about the investments we have to make in this utility have been so critical, because without those resources, we can't get it done.
Absolutely. Thank, thank you. Thank you very much. Uh, Ms. Romero, Ramirez, would you please take us into executive session?
Yes, sir. At this time, the board is going to recess into executive session to discuss matters that have been duly posted under several provisions of Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code, including, uh, consultation concerning attorney-client matters under Section 551.071, and to deliberate, vote, or take final action on competitive matters under Section 551.086. At the conclusion of executive session, the board will reconvene in open session and continue the meeting. At the conclusion of executive session, the board will reconvene in open session and continue the meeting. It is 9:49 AM as we go into executive session.
Ms. Ms. Romero.
Bring us back in open session, please.
Yes, sir. It is 11:00 a.m. and the board has concluded executive session. I can confirm that there were no votes taken, no matters were discussed, that we're not part of the post agenda. We do have a quorum. All members present.
Okay. Thank you. If we could move to item number eight for future agenda items. We're looking at the, I asked them to put this down, the Robert rules of order, ERP risk, financial risks, AI framework, A and F, audit and finance issues, generation planning, just things that we're looking for future comments. Do we have any, item number nine, any review of action items?
I had no open action items from the last risk meeting, and I had three from this meeting. The first was from Chair Gonzalez. She's requesting an explanation of the AI policy, strategy, framework, or approach that the company will be taking. Second item I had was from trustee Steen. He requested an explanation of mitigations for the top 10 risks listed on our risk map. And then the third was from Vice Chair Romero to engage or cooperate with the city of San Antonio on the discussion regarding large load customer approach. And that was all the open items that I have, sir.
Thank you. Next item number 10, do we have a motion to adjourn? We have a motion. We have a second.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion, adjourn.